Mr. Peters? All in favor? Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hope on?
Ms. Berry?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton? Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Perhaps for the last time, Ms. Morgan?
Here.
Ms. Mr. Peters?
Here.
I might be in the audience.
We might have a special.
No, we don't have to. That's true. That's true. She will be at graduation.
Yes, I will.
Okay, and motion to consider the approval of the agenda. Motion, Mrs. Morgan, second, Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
I'm not in favor of motion, Carrie.
Is there approval of the minutes of May 10 and then May 16? Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second, Mrs. Silver, all in favor?
Aye.
And we're on to recognition. We certainly are going to recognize Mrs. Morgan for her 10 years of work that she serves. She's volunteered many hours of her time as part of support students, employees, and community members. She's been a valued member to our team, and we greatly admire her dedication to the district. So, thank you, Linda, and there is a token of appreciation that might be here for graduation. It might be. It's like everything else in the world today. It's on order, but we don't know when it's going to be.
You just blame it on supply chain.
So, that's where it is. It's okay.
Yeah, yeah, well, I do, I do have to thank the district for, I'm pretty humbled for all the years that I've been able to actually be able to serve the district. And I think Randy can attest that the past 10 years, there's been quite a well brought. I do have to say, and I know I developed a reputation over the years for my fight for the music program.
Arts, arts.
Arts and music, yes, of course. And I'm sure I'll find ways to continue that, not this format.
There you go, fundraiser. That's great. Note to self. Okay, then we have the recognition of our retiring employees and employees recently retired throughout September 21 to August 22 time. Period commemorative books will be placed into circulation in our school libraries in their honor of service to the district. Through Central School offers heartfelt congratulations and best wishes to the following retirees, many of which have provided decades of public service to the children and residents of our school. Ken Dustell, who started the service in 1989. Ken Dustell is one of my students. Kathleen Lawless, who started in 2002. Linda Wade, in 1997. Sadia Fountain, in 1996. And Patty Remar, in 2000. So, congratulations to all of you. And there was a focus, I do have a question for. You don't tell somebody. Just telling you. Years ago, they used to give a bell. No? Tracy Howard put out, said, "To send you, I hope you get the bell." I didn't get a bell. Somebody did. I thought there's no more bells, right, Sherri? No more bells.
Not the bell.
But we do appreciate all of you for, you know, your years of service and thank you so much for being dedicated to our students and our school and being part of through. We certainly appreciate it. So, now, we'll have a recess, our purpose of acknowledging, we have our recognition. And, and a motion for the recess.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Morgan, second. Mr. Taylor, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion, Carrie. So, I will look at. Yeah, both agree to be in the meeting?
Yes.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second, Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
If you want to go on, I would like to, um, jazz, jazz ensemble representatives. And, what's your names?
When I was, uh, at the time, um, I was based in Giddaer, Gavin Arrow, Ace, Zachary Morgan, Paul Tossax.
Thank you very much, it was really, we always like to listen to that while we're doing our singing. Anytime you want to come back. Bonnie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. I do wanted to, at that point, um, recognize Ms. Murphy. She moves on to her new position with Franklin, Essex, Hamilton, and Bosie, so congratulations.
Thank you.
With gas prices, I think it's much more convenient.
Thank you, feel grateful for my time here, even though it was short, so.
It's good.
Well, thank you, I'm sure.
And, two, to recognize Mrs. Rivas, who will be the associate principal for the middle school, starting July 1, so thank you for coming on board with us.
I'm grateful for the opportunity, I'm really excited for the challenge. Thank you so much.
And, Mr. William Gordon Arrow is here tonight, who will be joining us in July as our new board member. So, thank you for coming tonight and being part of our little recognition for the people who are retiring and listening to our jazz. So, with that, a couple of comments, I didn't have anything on per comments, and there was nobody signed up at this point, unless somebody does it otherwise. It's a quick test report.
So, um, may I feel like to talk about one being a hundred, a hundred day plan, so there'll be some stuff going on by the end of the month in regards to some of the activities or some of the meetings that I plan scheduling for the community and leadership and faculty over the summer, which will extend myself, my hundred day plan, allowing those conversations, I think it's so important to have those conversations through and look forward to having conversation with Mr. William Arrow as well as part of my hundred day plan. We also have some summer programming across the district, um, we have a summer, we have summer school or summer school and high school going on. Um, we're working right now to also have that in the middle school, which is going to be kind of a credit recovery, um, process, we're going to be doing it, um, throughout the month of July. And, um, so that's going to be happening, and we also will be having quite a bit of professional development for our teachers, um, so there's curriculum work and teams that's going to be happening. Teachers are, um, working in approximately 15 hours of cur- of curriculum work there, but then we also, the elementary school, have an opportunity to, um, it's exciting, actually, that we have a new math program that's going, we've, that is coming into play. It's called Inti Math, and it's going to be a kindergarten through fifth grade program, and today with principals and intervention coordinators to ensure that we're at a place where we're making the right choice on the materials. Mrs. Rappidew came to that meeting as well for a few minutes to help us make sure we're making the right calls on some of our materials. We actually are making a commitment to that program for six years, um, and that will allow us to get the best of it possible. And, um, the teachers will be having professional development, five hours of professional development in addition to the elementary school for that particular work. So, um, that doesn't mean that they can't extend their math, their math endeavors into the other work that they're working on, but that will allow those pieces. So, a lot of things going on, we also have a, um, a summer opportunity for online professional development for our teachers, we're partnering with a local central school, and teachers will be getting that to sign up for their interest in math. So, that's another opportunity for staff to, to receive additional professional development, and a variety of different things are going to be there. And, um, we also have our PACE program, so the PACE program will be working through the middle school again this summer and trying to have, um, activities, having activities for our students, and the combination of academic as well as enrichment type of activities. I would say to everyone, I think that most of the activity there this summer will be more towards the enrichment side of things, so I think that that's exciting. It's gone out recently to our, to our community as well as, um, we're working on making sure enough staff is working with a cooperative extension to ensure that we have, um, activities for our kids. So, those are some of the things that are happening. One of the other areas I wanted to talk to everyone a little bit about, it's been, it's been difficult for, um, schools, it's been a kind of scary time in schools after, after the shooting that happened in Texas. And, you know, one of the things that I think we, we definitely see is a heightened level of concern by everybody, with our teachers, our parents, um, and so, one of the areas we've been addressing is making sure, um, doubling down on all of our protocols, making sure that we, we're doing things as safe as possible. But, I think, we actually changed our format of our final drill of our lockdown this year, um, because we definitely recognize that the reason for our drills that we do in our school are based on the fact that drills are to identify areas of weakness. And, um, as a leadership team, we identified the area of weakness, we already knew where it was, and that was in our cafeterias. So, um, the leadership team, all principals and associate principals worked, um, within their buildings during lunch shifts to determine what we would do in those, in those situations, and have turned it into a teachable moment. So, principals were there guiding, showing kids where, what we would do in those places, and they also, elementary principals took that opportunity to also train, um, playground staff in regards to what we would do. And I think that everyone would say they feel pretty comfortable with, I mean, as comfortable as anyone could be in those circumstances, but comfortable with the protocols that we have in place. We put out, um, had some meetings with our building safety teams as well in regards to, um, addressing, you know, just everyone being vigilant, being vigilant, meaning when, when you walk in a door, make sure the door latches behind you, just don't assume it's going to. If there's something that someone sees that's not working well, let us know, and we're going to address that, I think that's real important. And one of my, um, meetings for the, for my hundred day plan will be a, will be a roundtable on safety. So, I think that that'll be a thing for community members if they're, if they have questions about safety, I can address that there as well. So, that's going to be coming out at the end of the month in regards to those, um, roundtable sessions. So, that's pretty much the half of the superintendent.
Thank you. The administrators.
Just got PAT.
Oh, sorry, I skipped over.
Sorry.
Thirteen, I didn't mean. That's because you didn't give me a bell.
So, I'll just, um, no, on behalf of PAT, we would like to thank Mrs. Morgan for your 10 years. Um, I know we've had, um, some very good meetings working with you and collaborative, so, uh, thank you very much, um, you know, for your dedication to the district. Um, it, it has really been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
At the same time, we'd like to wish Ms. Murphy, good luck in your future efforts, like you said, it's been short, but I'm in high school, but from people I talked to in the middle school, you definitely made an impact in that school, so good luck, and you will be best. And then, so, our retirees left, but obviously, uh, you know, they've been, major parts of PAT, um, you know, Cindy held a couple of positions out of PAT in, uh, 1996, 97, 2000, you know, they put in a lot of dedication to the district, um, so we want to make sure they're recognized. You know, other than that, seven, eight days count, I think, but.
Who's got a count?
Who's count, exactly, who's count?
You do have an estimate.
Oh, seven days, so, yeah. So, to say the year has been normal and has run smooth, um, I think would not be accurate, but I think everybody's done the best job that they can, and they've given a lot of time and put a lot of effort forth to make, get the best year possible for our students. And that's not just PAT, that's, you know, administrators, the board, uh, you know, everybody, um, in the district. So, hopefully, we can end the school year, the next seven days can go smooth, everybody can, uh, enjoy their summer, recharge, and come back next year, and hopefully, pre-COVID will, will exist.
Hospital. Hospital. Hospital.
No, that's what it was like.
I don't think, I don't think we'll ever get back to that, but it would be a different normal, because we're much more aware of things, but we thank you, we thank, you know, as you said, it takes all of us to make it successful to thank everybody.
Lots of information on sports.
I know, right? So, yeah, just back to back meetings. That's what happened when we had all the bunch of meetings. The scores got pushed back a little bit, but I wanted to make sure that we went over spring scores while saying we're on an athletics before we went into recess for the summer. One thing that's not on here that I just came from, we, um, athletic department puts together a signing ceremony for our senior athletes who are going to play collegiately, and we recognize where they are. I did not put that in the PowerPoint, and as I was sitting there, I was like, oh, I probably should recognize those ladies and gentlemen that are moving on. So, uh, we have Abigail Bruce, who will be going to the University of Norwich to play soccer. Catherine Bowman's going to the University of Nebraska to bowl. Courtney McCarthy's going to Plasberg State University to play basketball. Hannah Myers is also going to Plasberg State to play soccer. Morgan Phillips is going to Norwich University to play soccer. Keegan Smith is going to St. John Fisher to golf. And Courtney Ashline is going to Robert Weslin to be on the track and field team. So, we just came from that, kind of very nice ceremony and recognized those athletes. All right, so, let's start with our softball team, we had a very successful swing. Um, our girls softball team did very well, they were going into sectionals as a three seed and ended up pulled out on the upset against PHS to, uh, win the section seven championship. Our all-star selections were first team Rach Mador, Bella Sypek, and our audible mention was Gabby Cunningham. They lost a heartbreak in the regional semifinals to the state champions. So, they got to play a very good team, it was a very good experience, uh, we lost 12 to nothing in that game, but that team we played had scored 300 and roughly 30 runs in a 20-game season and only gave an up 10. So, the fact that we only lost 12 to nothing, we were super excited. We actually did very well, and even though regardless, the score was twelve. Now, our baseball team also had an extremely successful season. They were CBAC champions, section seven champions, regional finals finalists, that we lost the heartbreak game too. Um, our All-Star selections were first team Ryan Maggie, Zach O'Connell, and Dana Dupree, and our audible mention was Wyatt Freeman. Our ladies track and field team, um, they had a great season too, they finished second at the sectional meet that we hosted here at Peru, and everybody, if you were on campus that day, saw the thousands of people and the thousands of cars, um, that were here. Our individual sectional winners, which were Lily Swires in the hundred meter hurdles, which she was a state qualifier for, and in the triple jump. Um, she finished states, I believe, in the triple in twelfth, and thirteenth, I believe, in hurdles. Our four hundred relay was Alaguerro, Maggie Guero, Ophelia Brain, and Lauren Davy. Our four by four meter relay, Alaguerro, Maggie Guero, Mackenzie Arnold, and Ophelia, which was also a state qualifier, they finished fourteenth, I believe. And our eight hundred meter was Maggie Guero, and Ophelia Brain was a state qualifier for the people chase. The ladies team also won our Ray Holmes Sportsmanship Award through the CBAC. Our boys track and field team, they were very competitive, they found themselves with many new faces on the team. Um, our boys team went from very little participants to a lot of participants, which was fantastic. They finished fourth in the section, we had an individual section winner, which was Harrison Matthews in the four hundred meter hurdle, which he also earned a state bid for. Our boys team finished season six and three, they had some close matches that had concerned their season in a totally different direction. They worked very hard and should be very proud. Um, the individual state qualifiers were Mason Marrow and Elijah Lederman. Our girls tennis team had a great season, they finished seven, one, and one. They fell short to the CBAC title, but made a great run at it. Our first team, our first team All-Star was Jacqueline Mitchell, Mitchell, and Remy Monmarmon, and our coach Bruce got Coach of the Year this year. Unified, I hope everyone got an opportunity to see some of the clips or a game itself. Um, they had a great season, they only had one loss as they, at the top, so they stood at the top of the league, and we want to thank our school and community for the amazing support that this program is receiving. Golf, our golf team had a great season, they finished second in the AC, they missed the sectional title by six strokes. Keegan Smith finished his season as the individual section champion and won the lowest score for the tournament. He earned his third trip to the state tournament, he would have had four if COVID would not have set up for him like that. So, one of the most things I'm proud about is, obviously, every quarter I, um, report on the scholar athlete, every one of our teams this year made the scholar athlete. Girls and boys tennis, girls and boys track and field, softball, baseball, unified basketball, and golf. Every one of our teams, so that's amazing. Fall, let's talk about August. So, obviously, we'll be ramping back up in the fall, we'll have football, all our levels, soccer, both boys and girls, all levels, cross country, varsity and modified, volleyball, three levels. Football cheer, we'll have, uh, varsity and our re-modified program. Gymnastics will be our varsity and modified, and girls swim will be merging with all stable again this year. So, um, starting August twenty-second, we'll have athletes back on campus, and then our modified athletes will be arriving on the twenty-ninth. And that is it, and I wanted to thank everybody for the sports this year, the support, it was a great year. Um, getting back to what the new normal is, we had a great year, our teams did fantastic, our athletes did well. Um, I think they're happy to be back, back playing sports, and back in state bids, and going to tournaments and regionals, I think that makes, I'm very happy, very proud of all of them. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, uh, so, H. Delcoy, I'm a McDanielian, technical support leader for the district, and I just wanted to provide a follow-up to the February presentation that I gave depending on our instructional technology planning and goal writing that I worked on, uh, from December, uh, through May. So, we, uh, managed to put together a committee, a pretty diverse set of stakeholders. Uh, we had, uh, parent representation, board representation, uh, teachers from, you know, across the district, along with administrative and leadership team participation. And, one of our biggest, the most powerful future pay group, our students, the four at the end, they did a fantastic job of offering their opinions and student perspective. Actually, you know, was kind of the driving force behind some of the goals that they did, right? Uh, so, it was great to have them on board. So, we had to submit our plan by deadline to Merritt for review, uh, we got that in their hands prior to April fifteenth. Uh, the plan was certified, uh, by State Ed on the second, uh, and we received quality feedback across the board from the review team, uh, and actually used the out of the planning process and some of our goals as exemplars to, uh, kind of work with other districts that were struggling to pull things together. So, uh, that's just identify the hardware of the team, uh, that came together, and the perspective that they offered throughout the process, uh, they really did a fantastic job. All right, uh, throughout the process, we did establish a new instructional technology vision, and we aligned it with our current district strategic plan. Uh, so we expect students and staff members to be aware of the impacts of computing technologies on society through many lenses, utilize computational thinking concepts and practices, understand the interdependency of basic network and system design, apply digital literacy to enhance learning and improve the community by becoming collaborative, productive, innovative, and ethical citizens, protect data and computing resources that they access through practicing basic cybersecurity safeguards, and remain intentional in all decisions regarding technology. So, that goes from instructional decisions through budgeting decisions. Uh, the language that we chose to kind of rely on was the New York State Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards, we wanted to make sure we aligned language there with our goals and our vision, as, as well as aligning it with the district, uh, goal, vision, and mission. All right, we utilized the SMART, uh, goal template for all three of the goals that we wrote. The focus of our goals, uh, first goal is going to be, uh, around sustaining our one-to-one initiative and growing the population of devices that are available, specifically on the primary end. We were not one-to-one, uh, in the K-two end of things, or pre-K-two. Um, however, we've set a goal to get this done, uh, by June thirtieth, so we want to maintain, uh, and increase access to upgraded technology, inclusive, uh, inclusive, uh, desktops, laptops, Chromebooks, tablets, interactive panels in our classrooms, uh, and increase student access. And I can say right now, we are currently one-to-one based on some help from, you know, some ECF funding. We are one-to-one in the primary right now. We've rolled, uh, rolled out Chromebooks in first grade and second grades, classroom sets, and then we'll be transitioning iPads now to kindergarten, it'll be one-to-one with iPads to start the fall. Uh, so we can check that box, uh, for at least one year as we look to maintain it, that's sustainable. Uh, the next two goals were focused on, uh, really aligning with New York's plan for the Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we included that language in our goals, uh, throughout the process, and the team did a nice job of that. So, Prus Central School District will utilize the New York State Computer Science and Digital Fluency Learning Standards to engage in camps and extend teaching and learning opportunities to promote digital independence in the global community by September twenty twenty-four, as measured through our technology survey and instructional observations. So, New York State has laid out a roadmap for the, uh, digital learning standards implementation. Uh, so we followed the recommended dates, uh, as guidance when we established it within the goal. Now, I can tell you that we are currently ahead of schedule based on the roadmap that they recommended. Uh, we started some work last summer with Steph Pedro, Connie Markowitz, they led a teacher team on each side of campus. They dove into the standards, they did some crosswalk work between curriculum, and it's already being taught in classrooms. So, they already started that process for us, uh, a year ago, over a year ago. So, uh, we are easily on pace to meet this one. And goal number three, building on the digital literacy concepts. Uh, Prus Central School District will promote and model digital literacy in order to ensure ethical and safe digital citizenship for all students and staff by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So, by the time we are done with this plan, we want to have better, um, educated, ethical, and safe digital users, uh, across campus, and that goes, you know, with the kids, to the adults, for everyone, everybody that's holding your school account, uh, to understand a lot of the changes that's happening within the world of technology. Uh, we are more susceptible now than we've ever been, uh, to loss of data, accounts being compromised. You know, you've heard it in the news, right? Uh, we're trying to avoid being one of the districts that, you know, gets their data system compromised, and we're, you know, we have a million dollar project on our hands that's already happening across New York State. Uh, so, educating everyone involved is going to be a key piece, and that's what goal three is going to focus on. Uh, resources, uh, that are out there, we have a document on the website that is our entire instructional technology plan, so that breaks it down in a little bit further detail, includes additional information, uh, in a variety of categories. New York State houses a great website that stores all this information, uh, there's PDFs available, uh, but it's all right there, also included the timeline and the roadmap, uh, that's been recommended by the state. As for our new steps, so the tech, the tech vision committee, uh, will meet again starting in the fall. Uh, there'll be some preliminary work that's done over the summer to build capacity within, uh, educating on the learning standards and, uh, being rolled out. Uh, we're going to continue our, our second phase of that, uh, Steph Pedro, Connie Markowitz will lead the charge on that for us, uh, as our teams will kind of meet again. There'll be some, you know, Mr. Storm discussed the training opportunity and our partnership with the Malone Central School District as a PD week, uh, there are opportunities within that week, uh, for people to get some background on, you know, our staff to get some background on the standards as well, and talk about how to develop those crosswalks, uh, to look at what, you know, how those standards can align with our curriculum as we talk in the classroom. So, uh, we'll meet again in the fall, we will set our action plan, that is already, you know, we discussed an action plan already, we have that document, that was part of our overall plan, uh, and then we'll start taking the next steps when we get together, uh, in September. If you're interested in participating on the tech committee committee, uh, I will be recruiting in the fall, uh, so hopefully, uh, if it is an area of interest and you want to offer your perspective, uh, please join. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Things one is very protective, I mean, we really, if the goal, meetings are only an hour long, and ding ding ding, you get them done, and the students were amazing, uh, participants, so thank you. Uh, have a motion for consent agenda A through K.
Motion.
Motion from Mrs. Mitchell, is there any discussion on any of those? Okay. We have a motion on the floor, Mrs. Mitchell, Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
Who's everyone, so motion is carried. Consent agenda A through L, any discussion on any of those? Motion, Mrs. Schreiber, second. Mr. Thurber, all in favor?
Aye.
I have all ayes. Okay, motion carried. Consent agenda personnel A through W. I said, whoa, I'm looking at that, I'm like, wow, W, right. Uh, I think we've seen on X, I'm sure, something like that. A, A. I should have remembered A, yeah, like in July. Uh, any discussion on any of these?
No.
Okay, motion by, from Mrs. Mitchell, uh, from Mrs. Morgan, consent by Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. In business, um, we'll do each of these separately, so, A to approve the revised acceptable use protocol. Now titled with Technology User Agreement, any discussion? Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Morgan?
Second.
Second. Okay, Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. B, um, we have the following resolutions from the, the vote. Any discussion? And motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Morgan?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
C, the actual, uh, related to the discussion of the resolutions and bylaw amendments as they contain the NISBA annual business meeting, if there's any chance of, I'll look through those one. Any discussion? And motion? Motion, Mrs. Schreiber?
We just have to, uh, motion and second as to what the actual action, so I'm assuming the action will be to take no action.
I would like to take the no act.
Take no action.
Motion to take no action.
They gave us that elaborate report, and you looked through it, and it's, we are taking no action.
Okay, Mrs. Mitchell, second was?
Second.
Second, Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And then the mergers, motion to, um, authorize the mergers for gymnastics and girls swimming, any discussion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Thurber?
Second.
Second, Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to have our meeting, not to have two different meetings, but to have our reorganization meeting and our regular meeting on Tuesday, July twelfth, any discussion? Motion? Motion, Mrs. Mitchell? Second. Mrs. Morgan? Doesn't affect you anymore, that's okay. She's literally, it's okay, we'll, we'll go along with it. All in favor?
Aye.
Look, you were so hesitant about it.
Um, there was nobody for public comments, and there was nobody on peru comments. So, Mrs. Morgan.
I'm going to the drum roll.
Motion to adjourn. Why have a second?
I'm seconding that one.
Any discussion on adjourn? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.